Hi, this is Jessica Williams with The Lens and this is the District 3 Orleans Parish School Board Candidate Form. The Lens is teaming up with WWNO FM to host these candidate forms. We'll host one for each district so candidates can get the chance to share their views specifically with their potential constituents in mind and so they get to talk to each other. First up, we have Brett Bonin, a local family law attorney and the District 3 incumbent. Next up, we have Karen Harper-Royal, a public school parent and education advocate. And finally, we have Sarah Houston, the founder of the charter school support organization, New Schools for New Orleans. Thank you all so much for coming out today, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Jessica.
So let's get right to the questions. My very first question relates to Orleans Parish School Board governance. And I'm going to start with you, Sarah. I want to know if you think that the Orleans Parish School Board should ever be allowed to run more schools traditionally? Why or why not?
The Orleans Parish School Board has a responsibility to ensure that there's a great public school for every child in the city. And whether or not they run more schools traditionally will be a discussion that we will have for a long time to come. We need citizen input, educator input, parent input to make those decisions as we move forward.
Karen, what about you? What do you think?
I think the Orleans Parish School Board should be allowed to run more schools traditionally because there's never been a shred of proof that determines that governance was why our schools had so many problems.
Brett, what do you think? What about you?
The answer is absolutely yes. The Orleans Parish School Board has shown the ability to go ahead and manage schools, manage money, also guarantee academic success. In the last four years, we've achieved the highest bond rating in the city, in fact, in the state. And we've gone from 17th to second. So regardless of whether it's a charter school or a direct run, we've shown absolute success.
Okay. The next question also relates to governance. I want to know, Brett, I'll start with you. If you guys would apply, if you were elected, would you push to apply for the failing schools currently under the auspices of RSD? And would you apply for those schools to come back as traditional schools or as charter schools?
I have absolutely advocated since the day I got on the board for schools to come back to the Orleans Parish School Board. I would like us to get the schools back that should come back to us. They were supposed to come back after five years, they haven't. I've advocated that in the legislature, I've advocated every chance that I can get. Given our success, I think they should come back to us. A lot of people have fought against that, a lot of people are ambiguous about that. But I think that local elected leadership is the best way to ensure that the schools do well. We've turned around the system, we've shown we can do it. I don't think it matters how they come back to us, as charter or direct run. And I would welcome getting back some of the failing schools that the RSD has had seven years to turn around. Some of the schools even that New Schools for New Orleans has. I think they have 10 schools that they started up. Eight of them are failing, one has closed. I'd like for us to have the opportunity to take some of those schools back and see if we can turn them around, given the success we've had in the past four years. So absolutely, I would like schools to come back to us. We've shown, we've got a proven track record, we've shown what we can do.
Karen?
Absolutely, we should get schools back. Each of those schools that have reached the mark and are eligible to come back should come back. I don't think it should be a board vote, a charter school board vote. It should come back. That was the intention of the legislation, that schools come back once they had been transformed. I believe the Orleans Parish School Board should absolutely apply to get back some of the schools that have continued to fail under the Recovery School District and those that have continued to failed as charters. I don't think the state should re-charter charter schools. They should give them back if the charter school has failed. And certainly, many charter schools have failed. Seventy-nine percent of the Recovery School District charter schools have failed. We should not let children languish in failing schools. It wasn't good enough for it to happen under the Orleans Parish School Board before, and it's not good enough for it to happen now. We all know that the state took over schools that actually were not failing. And some of those schools are now failing, schools such as Dibert. It was not a failing school under the Orleans Parish School Board. It had a school performance score above 60, which was failing at the time. So that school still has not risen to the level that it was pre-Katrina. Those schools should absolutely come back. I think we should create a transition plan so that we're not just doing it willy-nilly. We do it with the input of the community, but with the intention in mind that we're going to responsibly bring schools back under local democratically elected control.
Sarah, I'm going to allow you a little bit more time to answer this one because there were several points that were brought up. But first, I want to allow you to answer the original question, which was, would you apply for failing schools currently under the auspices of RSD? And would you apply for them to come back as traditional schools or as charters? And then I want to give you the opportunity to answer to some of the points that Brett just made.
Thank you, Jessica. I think the very most important factor for us in any decision about schools is what is best for children and what is best for students. And how do we ensure that more of our kids across this city get an excellent education? And so, as I have been campaigning and knocking on doors and talking to parents of students, as I read the polls of parents across this city, there is real hope and optimism. And many folks feel elated that their child is now in a higher performing school. I was at a KIPP school yesterday and the mother was just tickled pink because three of her children are now in a school that she feels is giving them a great education and a successful education and is a safe, warm place to be. And they are. And so those are the kinds of successes that we need to see happen for every child in every school across the city. And we need to make the decisions based on what's best for children, not what's best for adults. That being said, it's untenable for folks to drive to Baton Rouge when they have a question or a concern. And so we need to make sure that we've got the right system set up in place for parents to be able to advocate locally. So whether or not those schools are applied for, I actually think the factor we have to look at always is how are we doing with our kids? And how do we make decisions so that we have more children attending excellent schools? Let's be clear, the RSD is number one in the state for growth. That is unprecedented. And who would have ever thought, for New Orleans, that we would be able to see so much growth in schools that had been so miserably failed for so long? And we should be celebrating that, we should be looking to figure out, how do we get more of those successes for more of our kids and our families across the city?
And do you want to respond to the claims that Brett made about, and first, I guess, schools being, that they incubated being failing? Do you have any response to that?
Yeah, actually, if you look at the school performance scores, the average school performance scores of the New Orleans public open enrollment public schools in 2005, the average SPS was 49. That's on a 200-point scale, that's awful. I mean, that is just unacceptable for our children. If you look using the 2011 data, as you all know, we don't have the data yet out on school performance scores this year, but if you look at the data from 2011, the NSNO funded schools were at a 71. By the original definition, they're out of failure, but thankfully, thankfully, we're not stopping there and we're setting higher expectations for kids. And we got to remember that these were the schools that were the worst in the city. These are not the selective enrollment schools that the board kept control of. And it's incredibly important for us to set high levels of achievement for every student.
Karen and Brett, you two-
Can I, I'd also like to add, Jessica, is that when those scores come out, I'm very optimistic that most of them will be over that 75 bar. There are some that have had tremendous success. Akili is one of the highest performing open enrollment schools, it's a lovely place to be. The parents and the kids there are doing so well. And so it is a success story. Is it where it wants to be? Absolutely not. But have they made tremendous progress? And is that what we want to see and what we had not seen for years in Orleans Parish? Yes. There are schools, Sojourner Truth is a school that NSNO helped to start, is now closed. We supported the closure of that school. It wasn't performing, it was outperforming some of the RSD high schools, let's be clear, but it still wasn't at the level. And that's what I mean, we need to judge schools based on what they do for children and learning and students, not adults. And that we've got to have high academic standards and continue to push them. So I support the raising of the standards and I support there being accountability for a district school or an Orleans school, RSD school, or a child doesn't care, a parent doesn't care.
Karen and Brett, you two were kind of shaking your head when she was talking about the RSD scores improving over time. And I want to, this kind of segues into my next question, which I want to start with you, Brett. What do you think have been some of the charter movement's strengths? And what do you think have been some of its weaknesses in those seven years that we've had in New Orleans?
The one thing that wasn't answered is, I brought up directly, New Schools for New Orleans. Sarah has run on that, it's on all of her materials, and the bottom line is, New Schools for New Orleans, which she refuses to answer, has not been successful. There are eight schools that are failing, and she talks about changing standards and all kind of stuff, but she can't refute what I just said. And one of her schools has closed. And another school, Langston Hughes, had the worst case of absolute, you know, I mean, it's over $600,000 was stolen. And she keeps saying it's about children, not about adults. But when you look at New Schools for New Orleans and the fact that she drew a salary probably in excess of a million dollars from money that was supposed to go to children and schools, and then she sits there and she keeps saying, "It's not about adults, it's about children, it's about this, it's about that." You know, she's the one that is playing and running off of New Schools for New Orleans, but what you're seeing is failure and a lot of money flowing out to salaries to her own-
And I don't need to cut you off, but let's just get back to the question.
Jessica, can I respond to that with some data?
I'll give you a chance to respond to it, but first, I want to get to the question. I want to give you a chance to answer the question that I asked.
Sure. Go ahead and repeat it.
The question was, what do you think have been some of the charter movement's strengths? As well as, what do you think have been some of its weaknesses?
Look at the Orleans Parish School Board and look at our charters. We've gone from 17th to second in the last three years alone. That is unbelievable success. People try to say we have selective admission schools, we have two selective admission schools. And they always try to berate us and downgrade us. And the bottom line is, they can't. And what I don't like is the same people refuse to acknowledge the success of the Orleans Parish School Board. And, you know, I can tell you that, you know, our charters have worked, our direct run schools have worked. I don't think it matters, but bottom line is, the charters that are underneath us have shown great success and have shown that they can deliver to the community and they can deliver to children. And I've had an experience, let me tell you, I was out, I've been out walking every day too. I've been knocking on doors. And let me tell you, I have learned of a lot of problems that I did not know about before with some of the charters that are not under OPSB, but where I've heard of fees being charged for name tags, for this and that. And I've been in some of the poorest neighborhoods in the city. I've had eight different mothers catch me and say, "How can this be stopped?" And the only thing I can tell them is, "I'm sorry, but that school is not under the Orleans Parish School Board. I can't help you, we're trying to get schools back. I could address it then, I can put in a call to your superintendent for your system." But, you know, I'm hearing a different story with regard to some of the charters under the RSD. And don't get me wrong, they have a lot of charter schools that are doing a lot of good. But, you know, I think it comes back to the question of who's best to fit this seat. And again, Sarah is touting her charters, and I think that's what we really need to look at, because we don't want the system to go back to the way it was prior to Katrina. And that's what I'm about. And unfortunately, what I'm seeing in New Schools for New Orleans is a system that would bring us back to the way the school board was prior to Katrina.
Karen, I want to give you a chance to answer the question, and then I want to give Sarah a chance to respond to the question as well as some of the things that Brett mentioned. So first off, the question again is, what do you think have been some of the charter movement's strengths versus what do you think have been its weaknesses?
I don't think there've been very many strengths, except that there is the opportunity to innovate. It would really be great when we can see some real innovation instead of just replication of test prep factories. Many of the New Schools for New Orleans charters are exactly that, test prep factories. We continue to hear many, many problems, and this is where the weaknesses are. Parents are experiencing real problems. You think that the children from Sojourner Truth Charter School cared that they had great growth? Their school was shut down. Imagine being a junior, having to find a new school. Imagine being a senior, having to find a new school. There are real implications for families when these charter schools fail. So when you want to talk about children, I am absolutely focused on children. And children and families are being hurt by this failure of the post-Katrina reforms that have been mostly spearheaded by New Schools for New Orleans. I think that we are seeing a situation where charter boards are unaccountable to anyone. New Schools for New Orleans has set up a board bank, and they've placed many board members on charter boards. In fact, they share a board member with New Schools for New Orleans amongst several charter boards. It seems to me that the uptown elite is trying to tell us, public school parents, how to run schools. They don't use our schools. It's easy to say, talk about growth when your children are not in public schools. My child is in public school, I work with public school parents. I know the real pain parents are feeling. They have to get on a bus and travel across town just to find a school. Because another weakness of the charter school movement is that it has forced us, as public school parents, no longer to have the option of a neighborhood school. How do you think I feel that my child has to stand in front of a school that I helped to build to take a bus across town to another school? So there are many, many flaws. There's a way to make this work, it has to be done with the community. Reform can't be done to the community by people who don't have real experience in being a public school parent or being public school students themselves.
Sarah, I want to allow you a chance to answer the original question as well as respond to some of the claims that Brett and Karen have made about new schools.
Great. I'll make the answer your question first, Jessica. The positive charters is that our scores for our children have gone up dramatically. I mean, when you look at every measure across every fourth grade leave, eighth grade leave, the city is on the rise. Kids are getting better educations, we're graduating more children. Our top scores have outpassed Jefferson and East Baton Rouge Parish. It's been the work of many teachers, many educators, some inside the Orleans Parish School Board, some inside charters, some inside RSD, largely inside the RSD charters. And those people should be celebrated and trumpeted, and those kids' futures look so much brighter. So the number one thing is, for the first time, we have consistent improvement. And not only are we setting a bar and just keeping it there, we're beginning to take that bar and increase it so that our kids will have more life outcomes and more opportunities moving forward. So the very first thing is that. I do think, again, on the charters, the charters have the chances to choose their teachers and to work. The most important factor for a child's education is the quality of his or her teacher. And so you have all these schools across the city, some of whom are staffed purely by veteran teachers, some who are staffed by new teachers, some who are a mix. And our kids are experiencing higher quality teaching consistently across the city, and that gets them the gains that they need. I actually believe that we're watching, because of the charter schools, educators are able to make decisions closer to the children and what's in the best interest for kids and families. And so having been a teacher, I'm the only person in this race who's ever spent any time inside of a classroom teaching as an employed teacher, member of the union, taught fifth grade. I remember and worked very carefully with our kids and students. And teachers want to make decisions that are in the best interest of their students and want to be able to make those decisions quickly and responsively to the needs of the kids. And so I see that the autonomy, but yet accountability of charters is allowing that to happen for principals and school leaders and teachers to be able to do what's in the best interest of their students. You ask also about the negative. I think that we have a unique situation, that most of our students in New Orleans are being served by charter schools. And so some have done a great job of serving special needs kids, some have not. As a board and as a community and as a taxpayer, we want to make sure that we address all the needs of every child, our ESL students, those who have had any, anything. They're our kids, and we need to make sure that we're serving them. And so we need to make sure that we're holding all schools accountable. We've had some progress with One App and disciplinary policies, expulsion policies, being placed across the city to address some of these unique needs to help level the playing field. But at the end of the day, we don't want to do anything to jeopardize the academic improvements that we're being able to see. I would like to say that, some data to share with folks about the progress of the New Schools for New Orleans schools. Nine schools that we helped start in 2008 and 2009 have shown dramatic improvement. The open enrollment schools, as I said, were at a 49.2 SPS score. The NSNO schools by 2011 were at 71.2. That is terrific. I mean, that really helps kids and families. The percent of students at basic and above, in 2010, we helped start an additional four charter schools. Before their support, they were at a 31.1 percent, and that has risen to 50 percent of basic and above. That's a great growth opportunity for students and children. And then in 2010, New Schools for New Orleans, in partnership with the Recovery School District, competed in a federal, very highly competitive federal bid process, and we received an incubation grant, or it's called, la-la-la-la, I-3 grant. And that grant has allowed us to work with 19 more failing schools. It's all about transforming the failure and putting it on a path. No one is saying that these schools are where they need to be, but putting them onto a path. So before NSNO support, those schools, like Joseph Clark, Joseph S. Clark, that had the highest amount of growth last year, it went from a 27 SPS score to a 55. Is a 55 acceptable? No.
I wanted to stop you right there because we've got to move on to the next question. But I find it interesting that you mentioned that when you were a teacher, you were a member of the union. Because I think that that's one thing, just in the recent debates that I've seen, that has not been brought up very much. And I just want to know, and I'll start with you. There hasn't been a collective bargaining agreement for the Orleans Parish School Board, at least, and just for charters in general, but we'll focus specifically on OPSB, since Katrina. If you are elected, will you work towards instituting another one within the Orleans Parish School Board's direct run schools? Also, will you encourage charter schools to strike up their own? And why or why not either way?
Yeah. Again, it comes down to student achievement for me. If a charter school wants to enter into a collective bargaining agreement, there's some in the nation who have. And that's what the leadership and the teachers and the parents all feel is the best thing for the kids, absolutely. It needs to be what is serving our children the best. The Orleans Parish School Board, I know right now, allows for payroll deductions, and I would support them continuing to do that for their direct operated schools.
Karen, what do you have to say about maybe the Orleans Parish School Board instituting a union again?
I think that, it's been my experience as a public school parent, there has never been a time, and as I advocate for other parents, with other parents, there has never been a time that the union has been an impediment to student progress that I've observed. I've worked with the union on the school discipline policies, I've worked with the union on professional development. There is no reason not to have a union. After all, I am experiencing right now, teachers and other school staff who are really being bullied by their charter school management. And I think that teachers and school staff need some amount of protection from wayward school leaders who are unfairly firing people and treating people in bad ways. Teachers, teaching conditions are our children's learning conditions. And certainly, I want to make sure that my child's teacher doesn't have to worry about being unfairly targeted because she did the right thing for children.
Brett, would you work to institute a collective bargaining agreement? Or maybe you can speak to work that you've already done, or maybe why you haven't moved in that direction since you've been on the board?
You know, that was the interesting thing is, you know, before I got on the board and since, you know, I was not for a collective bargaining agreement. And it was, so it was really unusual to have the union come out and endorse and support me. You know, I can just tell you, it was very unusual. I can tell you that the landscape has changed. We now are a system of independent schools. All the rules have changed. And in that regard, these independent schools need to determine on their own, with their charter boards, whether or not, you know, they want to have a union contract. So it's a question that is no longer asked of the Orleans Parish School Board, it's now shifted to all these independent boards that run these charters, they have the decision to decide whether or not, you know, they want to embrace a union collective bargaining agreement.
Would you encourage charter schools to do so? Or would you try to institute one, or push to institute one for the traditional schools that the Orleans Parish School Board runs?
Thank you for asking me that question. I can tell you, charter boards need to do whatever is in their best interest. And I do not think it is appropriate for Orleans Parish School Board members to exert pressure on them, to come down to them, to try to persuade them to do anything. They are making decisions that are in the best interest of their schools. And I would actually react very against anybody that said that they were going to try to get an independent charter board to do anything. With the only caveat that we are trying to encourage a lot of the RSD charters to come back to us, I will admit guilt to that.
And it may be One App as well.
Absolutely. We are trying to encourage them, we're trying to market ourselves so that we can get them and to come back, because under the parameters that were set up, they get to make that decision. I fully respect that. I think they do need to make the decision. So we are lobbying them to come back, and we're trying to make it comfortable for them to come back. We're in a sense rushing them. But with that exception, I do not believe that any pressure should be put on, you know, charter schools to go one way or the other. They have board members, just like we have board members, and they need to make those decisions.
Do you believe, and I'll start with you, Karen. Do you believe, and this is, maybe you can just speak from your experience with dealing with school leaders and parents. Do you believe that all of the Orleans Parish School Board charters are treated fairly by the district in terms of getting federal reimbursement dollars on time or, you know, getting the support they need in other ways? It's something that's come up, and it hasn't quite been addressed yet, and I wanted to give you guys the opportunity to do that. And I'll start with you, Karen.
I think there's give and take when you enter into a charter school arrangement. Those schools under an Orleans Parish charter, there is give and take. And whether it's fair or not, it is what it is. It's a negotiation process with the Orleans Parish School Board. Of course, our relationships can be done better, and all of our children would benefit if those relationships are done better. But from what I can see, it has been, for the most part, a fair process. I was at some of the meetings when they went through the charter renewal process, I was very happy to see that there are some of the cracks in the charters, the original charters were plugged. And so I believe that they have been dealt with fairly. Certainly, they're getting even more than their share of funding under the rebuilding plan, because some of those charters were not damaged by the storm as much as some of the schools in the more flooded areas of the city. So I believe they've been treated fairly.
Sarah, I'll go to you next and allow you to respond to the question as well. Do you believe that all of the Orleans Parish School Board charters are being treated fairly by the district in terms of getting the money that they need in a timely fashion, getting the support that they need? You know, what is your opinion on that?
I know that it is incredibly important for us in the city to know where all of the resources are going, and that we need to make sure that we are fairly and adequately funding. That a child who's in an RSD school versus an Orleans Parish charter versus a district-run school, whichever, they're all public schools. And we have to get transparency and understand how those resources are allocated and that they're allocated fairly. And as I said, when someone is a special needs child and they need more funding, that that is addressed as well. I'm not an expert in it, I have not served on the board yet, so I don't know. I'm aspiring to do so and would work to make sure that there is transparency in that funding and equity in that funding. The RSD has a weighted student formula, it needs adjustments. There will always be adjustments that need to be made, but we need to make sure that it is out in the open and that we are funding equitably. And that it is timely. Because there is accountability at a charter level, it's a little bit different, they have to make sure that they are able to pay their bills on time, just like you and me. And so we need to make sure that those things are happening. And we are actually here in service to those schools and for those principals and for those teachers so that they can do the great work that they do with our children.
Brett, maybe you can sound off about whether you think it's been fairly in this need.
Yeah, I think to a degree it has, but we need to do a lot more. And one of the big questions that has come up is whether the charters can receive grants directly on their own and bypass the bureaucracy of the school board. And others, even like organizations like New Schools for New Orleans that receive all these grants. And I absolutely think these schools need to be able to receive these grants directly. And I do take front, yeah, I heard Sarah just say, "We need to know where the resources go." Yeah, I've had the opportunity to look at their fiscal year, ending in 2011, and this is a real problem. When you see $778,000 from New Schools for New Orleans gone to Massachusetts. And when you see $469,000 from New Schools for New Orleans going to New York. And when you see $394,000 from New Schools for New Orleans going to California.
I want you to answer the question, just because we've only got a limited amount of time. I don't want to get to closing statements.
That is the problem. It was the problem with the Orleans Parish School Board before Katrina. People had trouble figuring out where the money was going and what was happening with it. It is still a problem right now, I think to a lesser degree, with Orleans Parish School Board. You know, we have the highest bond rate, we've got our finances in order, but there are all these other different groups out there that are receiving monies for New Orleans schools, that are receiving grants, that are receiving donations, and their names imply that all the money is going to New Orleans. And it is flying out all over the United States, and people do not know that. And these schools are suffering in New Orleans because they are not getting the money. The money is not going to them. The poor students in New Orleans are not receiving the benefit of what people think The poor students in New Orleans are not receiving the benefit of what people think they're giving to New Orleans schools, and the money is flying out of the state. We cannot go back to the way the system was pre-Katrina. We cannot allow that to happen. And so, I think more needs to be done. That is the future, in ensuring that these schools get these funds directly, so that the Orleans Parish School Board can't mess with them, so that New Schools for New Orleans can't send the money out of state, and for other groups that are basically raiding these grants and these donations can't use it for their own devices, to pay salaries, to pay meals and expenses, to have all this money fly out away from children, away from schools.
Now, we've come to a close to a close, and I just want to give everybody a chance to kind of give your impressions, your last final impressions to your potential constituents. Let them know, you know, what they need to know from you, what they need to know about your campaign, and what you'll do if you are elected. And I'll start with you, Karen, since you're in the middle, and then you have a minute and a half to kind of give your last words.
Wonderful. What I would like people to know, that Karen Harper Royal, number eighty-six on the ballot, is absolutely the best choice. I have the experience, twenty years' experience working in the public schools in New Orleans as a parent and as a graduate of public schools. I am an independent choice for this election. I'm not beholden to big money from out of the state. I'm not beholden to any party bosses. I have an independent choice for the Orleans Parish School Board. I have proven that I work on behalf of the children. There's lots of money to be made in public education failure, in the failure of our schools, and I can proudly say that I'm not a part of making money off of the backs of our children. My child is in the public school system, and I am the absolute best choice for the Orleans Parish School Board. I will work with the community, not against the community. I don't feel that I know what's best for other people's children. I will use all of our voices, parents, educators, and community, to make decisions about where we move forward with public education.
Brett, I'll give you a chance to-
Yeah, I just want to say, I've got a proven track record of independence. I have done what's right. You know, everybody forgets to mention it. You mentioned that I'm a family law attorney. Well, I'm also the president-elect of the Louisiana School Board Association. Everybody has ignored that. There was a time when it was unthinkable that a school board member from Orleans could rise to the highest level of the State School Board Association. I have done that. I've done that by being independent, by advocating what's right. I will always do that. I have never profited off of children or schools. I will never do it. You know, this is a labor of love, just like when I volunteered for the New Orleans Police Department for nine years. I am volunteering to help our children and our schools. People don't realize, we don't get a salary on the school board. We get an eight-hundred-dollar-a-month expense stipend. That's who I am. I'm trying to give back right now. I'm not beholden to anybody. I am not beholden to out-of-state money or contracts or giving people money. That is not me. I will be independent. I've gotten widespread support for that independence. That's who I am. I will continue that and bring it to the next level if re-elected.
Sarah, I want to give you the fourth.
Thanks, Jessica. I'm delighted to be running for this office.